Folks, I've unmuted the audio. And we are on video.
It's looking good.
How are you?
We're good.
Isabel was playing.
Three minutes to spare.
I was doing the scoreboard.
So when do you think?
Which scoreboard?
Let's see which one's not great.
All right.
He's going to be injured.
So that's how life works.
Oh. Ben, how are you? Is that Joe? It's that Katie. There we go.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good job. Okay.
There you go. Thank you.
Like you've been doing it young lady.
Hey, bud.
Want to retire?
What? Congratulations.
I'm such an athlete. Go to that bigger gym.
Okay.
I want to get up and together.
I know. Put them on each side and you're right on the ones that you don't.
Can we just? How much longer? Would you like me to speak? I don't think you'd like it. I really don't think you'd like it.
I may stop you.
No, I haven't.
I don't remember. Is that okay?
You want to go?
But that's how much they would talk about.
You want to?
Just say that they were advertising.
New truck?
He said three months.
They can't run it.
Not necessarily identifying.
And we need that paperwork.
So just that, just that, just that, just be, just leave it there.
Yeah.
Cool. I'm at six o'clock. He is here.
Get ordering the cars for boring. Because it was thunderstruck. We did the all the weather.
Yep. Six o'clock.
Hey, folks, if you're not. All right, well, let me plug the lead line. I'll make a call though. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. The Secretary of Health will be sustained. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Secretary will do the scroll. And we have. Woo-hoo. We're all here.
All right. John Brotherton.
Here.
Moto Johnson.
Here.
Katie Johnston. Diana Mendoza.
Here.
Nikki Pettit. Eric Joe Robinson.
Here.
Tyler Wilson.
Here.
We got agenda. There's no one to sign that speaker. Thanks, Tyler. May I motion to approve the agenda?
I make the motion.
For movement and correction. Okay. Go with make the motion. You left second.
I'll second.
Okay, Tyler, second it.
John Brotherton.
Aye.
Moto Johnson.
Aye.
Katie Johnston.
Aye.
Diana Mendoza.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Here's a public comment. No public comments. I believe. So moving forward action consent agenda items.
And there's a lot on the consent agenda today, so I'll go over it quickly. Other than the regular items, we are looking to add job descriptions and wage scales for a health clerk. We were unable to fill one of our nurse positions. We now have a health clerk. We are adding a buildings and grounds person that would be full time member of our maintenance department. And included in that is the wage scale. There's a contract with a counseling service that use that's providing professional development. We have to appoint our treasurer annually, and that is Kendra Good. And then my evaluation tool is in there. It was presented at the last board meeting. We did have several donations. First Baptist Church donated $120 to JW Ader to purchase school supplies. For our opening day kickoff, Horace Mann donated the coffee and donuts for all of our staff. So a lot of donuts. And Lomen Ray donated the money to run the Sydney Dairy Barn truck. And Nikki rode in the truck the whole time during deliveries. Katie was there for two of the schools.
Thank you.
And Hannah rode the whole time too. Hannah and I had to, right? Okay. That's it for the consent agenda.
Your motion?
I have a motion.
Okay. Prove the consent agenda items, including personnel report as submitted. With the stipulation that each individual is required to comply with all requirements from the laws as indicated in the statutes and RCS board policy and procedures, including replications bills prepaid by the financial manager under board policy four point four. And that was made by Tyler. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Katie.
John Brotherton.
Aye.
Moto Johnson.
Aye.
Katie Johnston.
Aye.
Diana Mendoza.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
All right. We do have a presentation this evening, and it is Laurie Ednars, who's our pre-K program director. Is it just you coming up, I think? All right. And board, tonight, we're trying something. We think this is a smart idea. You should have a copy of the presentation so that you don't have to strain to see up at the screen. There we go. Yeah, they've got it.
Okay.
Okay. You just tell me when to click. You have more?
I do. I have things that if they want to see it, they can see it.
Thank you.
You can sit down. Or you can stand.
I'll sit. I'm very nervous. All right. So as Scott said, I am Laurie Ednars, and this is my third year as the pre-K director for Rantle City Schools. And my, I think, 27th year in education. So I've been around for a while. So RCS, five years ago, was awarded the preschool for all grant. And it was worth $588,546. And that is to run five classrooms. And I know I'm kind of jumping ahead, but I'm just talking off the top of my head. For five classrooms. And it is on a five-year cycle. And this should be the last year in the cycle. And so that means that sometime this year that we will recompete against the whole state of Illinois for the grant. And I wrote that grant in the past for a different district. And I think that somebody else wrote it for Rantle City Schools, but I know Jen is a grant writer. So she and I will probably collaborate on that. But I don't know, we haven't talked about it, but I'll probably be the one writing it. And so, but anyway, we serve 165 students for the pre-K program.
So it's 588,000 a year?
Correct.
Got it.
Yes. And so the 165 students, the first two years because of COVID, we did not reach that goal. But I do believe that we will reach that this year because of the number of people that have been calling for screenings. And we have three full days already for, we did today, Monday, and next Monday. So I'm anticipating that we'll see 165 sooner than later. So like I said, we have five classrooms total of 10 sessions. So some of the kids come in the morning from 8:00 to 10:30. And then we have the second session come from 11:50 to 2:20, and that is Monday through Friday. And each classroom has a classroom teacher that is duly licensed as early childhood and special education. And then in that classroom, there are also two teaching assistants or room. And each teacher sees, has a total of 32 to 34 students each day, which also means that they're doing documentation for all of those kids as well. So the, how we qualify kids for the program is we, some, some children will come to us from early intervention and that are already identified as needing special education services. We also have kids that go through a screening process, and they may score at risk in, on the screening process. And so we're monitoring them to see if they need special education services. And then some are just at risk for whether it's low income. It could be that they're a foster child. It could be that the, it's a single parent family, or the child was born very prematurely. And so those would be also considered at risk. And then the last one, 80% of our, of our grant says that the kids need to be at risk in some way. But if all of the spots are filled, then 20% of the kids can come in that are just typically developing. And so we, we do have that freedom as well.
What age do you start kids?
We start them when they turn three, and then we keep them until they are kindergarten eligible. So some of our kids turn five on September 2nd, but we keep them for that year because they've missed the September 1st cutoff date. And then the curriculum that we are using in pre-K right now is the creative curriculum, which is a play-based learning environment. And we also use the conscious discipline. We added Michael Hegarty last year because that was a district-wide initiative that we started in with kindergarten. But there is Michael Hegarty phonemic awareness books for pre-K, and so we added that for pre-K as well. And, and then this year, we're adding in, it's called writing without tears. And so we will be implementing part of that curriculum. The grant requires that we cannot use any types of worksheets or ditto's like, well, okay. That's a, that was an old thing. You know, the purple ditto's from, from long ago. Yeah, so we can't use any worksheets. We can't have anything that's, that was already made by the teacher. So everything is kind of their learning. And so with the handwriting, or with the writing without tears, we are going to use the chalkboards. And there's pieces that form the letters. And so we will use that part of it, but we won't use a workbook. So to get into our program, you have to go through a screening process. And the screening team uses the dial four. And that we look at their speech and language. We look at their fine and gross motor, and then also their concept areas. And so that we always tell the kids that they're going to play a game, and it takes about an hour. And during that hour, while the team is playing the games with the kids, then Tanya and the school social worker, which is Olivia this year, will be meeting with the parents and filling out a questionnaire and then doing a parent interview. Yes.
Who's Tanya?
Tanya Bond, my family educator over here. And.
You brought somebody else with you.
Well, I didn't. He just came on his own. This is Corey Peters, and he is my new, one of my new pre-K teachers. So, yes. And he found out that I was coming, so he said, I might come. So let's see. So once the screening process is completed, the team will review to see how the child did, and we'll look at the parent interview. And that will determine whether a child qualifies for our program. And if they do, then, well, the team will call the family regardless and let them know how the child did on the screening, and then what our recommendations are. And then based off of that, if they qualify, then they come in for registration. And once we have the paperwork, then they go ahead and get started. And I think this, right now, we're, I don't, I have rough numbers. We're probably between the 80 and 90 mark that we'll start school tomorrow. So we're already.
That's right, you haven't started yet.
We start tomorrow.
Yeah.
First date. We had parent teacher conferences yesterday and today. With the grant does require that we have in-person something, whether it's conferences or home visits or whatever, three times a year. So we do that at the beginning, and then again in October and March.
So they're actually on a different calendar, slightly different calendar than the rest of the district.
Just a little bit. All right. So every three years, the state of Illinois will say that it is our turn to be monitored. And National Lewis University will do the monitoring of our program. Because of COVID, we, it was split up into two years, which is not typical. So last, two school years ago, so 2021, they did a file review. And what that looks like is they send us this lovely handout, and I'll pass that around for you guys to look at. And they ask us to have all of this information for them to be able to review. And so typically, they'll come in, and then I hand them this binder, and they'll go through all of the pieces. And then, and then they'll say, I need to see these seven kids' files. And so they look at the files to see, is there a birth certificate, a physical shot records, home language survey, the dial screening, the, the, the parent questionnaire, the, the, um, let's see what else. Their residency, their income verification. So there's just a lot of pieces. And, and if any piece is missing, then, then they find the whole program not in compliance. So if there's one piece missing. So, so this was done, like I said, in 2021. They did find one finding on me, and that was because I forgot to put a date on one of the pieces of paperwork. So otherwise, everything was in compliance. And so then what happens is each year after, for three years, then I have to write a program, or the compliance program improvement. So every year, I just write on there, I'll remember the date next time. Because that's all I can do. And then, and then typically, they'll go into the classroom and monitor three of the five rooms. They give us a three-week window and say, we're going to come anytime during these three weeks. And, and they show up and, and here they are. But this year, so this was one year, and then last year, they did the EPRAS part. So this is the book that they use. And, and I'll kind of start passing these around. And so that's what they use to evaluate the classroom is the EPRAS 3 book. And then at the end, they give each classroom a report, and I'll pass this around. But it's, it's quite lengthy, but it will, it will show scores in each area. And then they give us an overall score for the whole entire program. And then based off of that, then we write a program improvement plan. And I'm thinking we probably.
A lot of our grants get audited like this, but I would say that the level of contact in the preschool for all grant is much higher than we get on the other grants. What the actual classroom observations is, I don't believe happens in any of our other grants.
So what, what happens then during this monitoring visit, they'll come in, and they're there for a whole two and a half hours. And they watch the interactions of the, the teacher and the TAs with the kids. And they're looking for high-quality interactions. They're listening for vocabulary. They're listening to see how they handle behaviors. And then they're also looking at the materials. Are there enough math manipulatives in the classroom? Is there enough numbers up somewhere? Is there different types of pictures up? Is it at the child's level, eye level versus up higher? So they're monitoring all of that. And, and then that's where they get the scores. So then, last year, after we received our report, we have 30 days to complete the program improvement plan to get that back to the state. And then every year for the next three years, we have to visit this and see if we are updating it and how we're making those improvements in those areas. Scores have to be at least a five out of seven, but seven is the highest. And anything below a five is what's included in the program improvement plan. And last year, our program overall received a score of 5.18. So, and anything over five is, is considered acceptable. So our highest deficit areas were the math materials and then also those math conversations because they want to see the, the staff having those conversations during the play or center time outside of just, they just want math being talked about all the time. So no matter when it is. All right. So I already talked about that. And then last week, Scott and I received an email from the state saying that we had achieved a gold rating, which is the highest that we can get. So that's 5.18. Yeah, Scott emailed me, it's like, is this something that I should share with the board and should be celebrated? I'm like, yes. It is very much to be celebrated, and I'm very excited about that. Although our goal is, is that we really want to see our scores in the sixes and, you know, trying to achieve the sevens. And in some areas, we can get there. But the pre-K program coming into it has been great, and I would like to continue doing those great things that we're already doing and then just work at getting those scores higher and preparing the kids for kindergarten so that they're ready to start the ground running and be caught up to some of the other kids that might be more typically developing and not at risk. So I would love for you to come visit our program at any time. And if you ever have any questions, you can, you can ask now, or you can always email me.
Lori knows that pre-K classrooms are my favorite ones to visit, so.
And you're going to get pictures tomorrow.
I hope. I hope, yeah. The, also, you have a leg up on last year in that you are, the program is fully staffed this year with pre-K qualified teachers. We were not in that situation last year. All of your TA positions are filled, I think. Yeah, they are, they are.
I need that one extra, but that's okay. The work's filled, yeah.
So, I mean, that's a big advantage over where we started last year, coming back from COVID.
And the nice thing too with the teachers being duly licensed is that they can, all of them can serve the children that have special education needs.
Right, so they're all, that's something to say. They're all certified as early childhood educators, and they are qualified as special educators at early childhood.
Correct. So that was a huge accomplishment to get all five.
I'm going to let the board ask questions too.
Sure.
What's the difference between our pre-K program and daycare?
Well, so typically, daycare is not as structured. And sometimes the kids are busy watching TV, or, you know, they don't have a curriculum that they follow and where we have a curriculum. When you come into the classroom, it is, like I said, play-based. And so you will see kids playing because that is what is appropriate for three- and four-year-olds. And, but we're trying to teach the kids learning through play. So for example, if a child is building a castle, then we could ask, you know, we can sit down and talk to them and ask them, what shapes of the blocks are they using? How many blocks are they using? What are they building? Why are they building it? And then, and then talk about the features that they have built. Same with art. If they make a picture, what are they creating? Why are they creating it? So we really want to use open-ended questions when we talk to them instead of closed questions because that is what helps extend their vocabulary.
I have a question about the, the RFP for the grant. It, you said here that it was around 588,000. Is that over a five-year cycle? Do they give you a cap? And so that's just how much it ended up being every year? Or?
Yeah. This year, they did. They came out with an email saying that they are going to do a cost of living increase, but we haven't gotten that amount yet or hasn't been added into the grant. So I'll just have to figure out where we'll put that money. But when I go to rewrite, I will ask for a lot more than that because that barely covers. It doesn't cover all of our salaries for the staff. It covers three of the teachers and the TAs. But what I will do is I will write for all five teachers and all of the, all of the TAs, as well as some transportation reimbursement, classroom supplies, and then all of our parent events that we can finally have again now that COVID's over.
So I'm probably not asking it correct. They do give you a cap, or are they saying like it has to be a certain amount each year?
Every year is 588,000. And, and then we need to spend all of that, or some of it will go back. And then the next year, it's 588,000. So they don't take into account the cost of living increases until this year. But it, it will always be the same each year. Okay.
So the district does contribute local funds.
Yes.
to the pre-K program. It's not just the grant.
The goal is to have as much in the grant as we could to not have to use local funds. So that's what I'll try to do.
That's my question, I was going to ask.
And there's other routes. So for instance, if we didn't have the preschool for all grant, we would have a different-looking pre-K program, but it would more likely be through other funding sources, like special education. We would serve fewer kids, and it'd probably be a higher number of high-needs kids in that group that are coming out of earlier mention.
Because literally, we have to identify kids in the district that need special education. So if we didn't have the preschool for all, we would still have to serve all of our children with special education. And that's a true idea.
Is there any else?
Another question I had was, did you say that if it was low income, then they would qualify for the program?
That's just one piece of the, of the at-risk criteria. That can't be the only thing, but that would be one, one piece of-
Because our whole city or village qualifies.
I don't have very many kids that don't qualify. Other questions?
And towards the end of the meeting, we'll be talking about the dream for pre-K. Very briefly, so you have to wait for that. All right. Any other questions for? You kept to 10 minutes, good job. Only scoring criteria. Kidding. Thanks, Lori. Ready for item seven?
Yes. New financial fiscal year, excuse me, 23.
All right. So as a reminder, for most, for five of the seven, and you've gone through this before, the tentative budget is a document that is what we are projecting as of right now. It's formally posted on August 15th, which is 30 days prior to when you will be asked to approve the budget. You'll be asked to approve the budget in September. We have one of those board hearings at the beginning to allow for public comment. And then you'll approve it, hopefully it'll approve it, during the regular board meeting. It, a tentative budget is not the final budget, but it reflects the current anticipated revenues and expenditures. The numbers in our regular budget may be different than the tentative budget. So what I'm saying is, what we finally approve is going to look very different to, in pieces, to what we're talking about tonight. Not huge changes, but there are differences. And frankly, right now, Chris and I and Allison and Jenny are just about every day right now updating things in the tentative budget as we get new numbers in. So when we go into September, I'll highlight the significant changes. But really, as a board, what you're most interested in are the big picture typically. So this is what we're looking at. Fiscal year 22, which is July 1 of 2021 to June 30 of 2022, we have not yet completed our audit. So the auditor will be coming in next week and closing out the fiscal year 22 for us. Once that is done, and remember, the audit will be presented to the board. But once the audit is done, we're going to have better, a better handle on how we closed out the year for those starting numbers. So on a tentative budget form, it is a giant form, but the big numbers are, on Monday, the version that was posted, we had 14.3 million in our initial fund balance. So that means that's the money in the bank. That is what's, about what's recommended, and the auditor will talk about that. You do have to maintain a certain amount in the budget as a fund balance. Usually, I think it's 20 to 25% is what you want to keep. So we do keep a healthy fund balance, and that is partly because what happens if the state stops giving us money? What happens if we don't get the federal grants? And especially in a district where such a large proportion of our dollars come from state and federal sources. Local property tax revenue is extremely stable and reliable. It's just, it's a small portion of our budget. We have $36.5 million in anticipated revenue. And at the moment, on Monday, when we did this, we had $32 million allocated to projects. And keep in mind, over 85% of our spending is on salary and benefits. So by September 15th, we will have gone through our audit. We'll have more accurate numbers for you, particularly in that initial fund balance. And then the other piece that's happening right now, the last line says, "We are assessing and prioritizing facility improvement projects, and we will not have a $4.5 million surplus." We, the, the target is to come out balanced, that we're going to, we have a plan to spend as much as we bring in and save a little. The other thing we're finding right now is we're still closing out some of our fiscal year 22 grants. And so there are some bills that will come out of that, that 4.5 million that are still to be paid for the last fiscal year. Yeah, that's it. We're in a good position, though, in terms of our revenues, keeping up with especially what we've done in terms of increasing our teacher and support staff salaries. So, so what you're asked to do today, you can ask me questions about the budget if you want. And then all you're asked to do is motion to approve the fiscal year 23 tentative budget. That's all we've got to do.
Any questions?
Nikki's ready to make the motion, I think.
Oh, she's ready to make the motion?
Yes.
Nikki, make the motion.
I so move to accept the tentative budget, fiscal year 23 tentative budget as presented.
Would you like to second?
I'd second it.
You'll second?
John Brotherton?
Aye.
Moto Johnson?
Aye.
Katie Johnston?
Aye.
Diana Mendoza?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Joe Robinson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
All right. We are, this is coming to the board as a, we have, we're looking to enter into a managed services agreement. This is why Jenny Ferrer is in the room, partly. We are going to be contracting with Vergee, which is a managed service company related to the management of our HVAC and other control systems. So this all sounds very technical, as it is. This is the group you, Tyler, came in and you met with them one time when they presented. It's all about reducing our energy costs to the district and extending the life of our existing technology systems. This is not, however, technology like our servers and internet. So our HVAC in our district is all operated through computers. And so that's probably the biggest component of this. It also prepares us to be ready should we get to a point where we're looking to do solar projects in our district. And that is something that is very likely coming to more and more school districts. It's already out there in some places. And so we would be able to tie in solar into the system pretty well. The upfront cost annually is $98,000. We estimate, they estimate, is that the end cost, after we've done the energy savings and the equipment savings and the maintenance savings, will come out to about $10,500 is the estimate. It's a three-year contract that we're going into. There are some, I would call them escape clauses in the contract that Jenny has worked out with them. So they can't increase it over a certain amount. Those, that's the main one. Any questions on this?
So like we said in that group, it's going to be changing the controls and the thermostats and stuff like that. And then getting them online to where if something were to go down, they'll send somebody out, correct?
That is a big part of it, is that accurate?
So the orchestrate is the dashboard, that will have that piece to it. And the other piece is the, our, our software and equipment are towards the end of life because of how old they are and everything's based on software. So by, we didn't want to throw out over a million dollars and have all our HVAC systems updated all at once. That's pretty expensive. So through this agreement, they'll start going through and they'll update the equipment and the software for all of our HVAC, which will then make it last for another 15, 20 years down the road. So it's kind of two pieces to it. It's the orchestrate that will help us manage all of our systems. If the freezer out in the warehouse goes down, right now, we have no way to know until somebody goes out there and sees that it's a problem. This will inform us that it's a problem, so we can get to it before we lose any of the food out there. It's, you know, fob systems, locking and unlocking doors. It's the energy, being able to turn on and off the power, adjust the air remotely for the gym if there's a game. Some of those things, it'll all become automated with, with the orchestrate system. And then the other side is the maintenance and, and updates for all of our HVAC equipment. So those are the two sides. And they did tell me today, so the cost that they have on there, if it happens that we have more energy savings than what they were predicting for us, we get the savings. So it won't, it won't always necessarily be that, that bill. But that they wanted us to know that they do make that adjustment based on what our energy savings actually is. But we'll be able to manage that. We can also decide if we want to play it monthly, quarterly, or annually. So you guys make that decision.
Well, we'll just-
We'll just-
We'll put it in the budget, how about that?
That's right.
All right. So, so when you're saying it's going to be monitored, you know, like you said with the freezer or something, when that's going to be monitored on it, like a SCA system? To where, you know, like you just said, to where someone knows if-
Any, anybody, any of us, administrators, Shannon, we all can be notified on our phones, computers, manage it from right there.
And you can also control it from the computer?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. We have some of those controls right now, but not for all of our systems. And this is almost, if you picture, being able to pull different apps in. So work orders, if there's an app for work orders, they can go into the dashboard. If there's, if we do solar, there's an app that you can monitor your solar with. It just goes into this dashboard. So it's all into one system that we can control wherever we're at.
Okay. Any other questions? Nikki will make the motion. Nikki will make the motion, and I'll second it.
Did she make the motion?
Yeah, she made the motion, yeah.
I so move to do.
And I second it. Do you want to move then?
John Brotherton?
Aye.
Moto Johnson?
Aye.
Katie Johnston?
Aye.
Diana Mendoza?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Joe Robinson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
All right. Up next is the approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Randool regarding Pleasant Acres Safe Routes to School. This was approved, I believe, at the last regular meeting of the village. They approved their side of this. Similar to what we did at Northview, which about a year ago, we were closing this one out, I believe. So we've applied for the grant. The grant is for $250,000. And that's partly a matching grant. So the village is coming with $100,000, we're coming with $95,000. There are some contingencies in there. And we anticipate construction starting next summer. What we are able to accomplish in the end with the grant is dependent a lot right now on materials and construction, and once that goes out to bid. What we're looking at doing is, and again, the village is really doing a lot of the, the legwork at this point on it, is addressing some of the traffic flow once you're in the Pleasant Acres area. So as you know, there's only one way in, that's Short Street, and there's only one way out. So there's some things we'd like to do. A lot of it's about improving sidewalks and walkability to the schools. So the street that is in front of Pleasant Acres, is that Harger, Harper? Harper? Harper, they're, they're looking at extending a sidewalk on Harper that would then connect through that access path that's already there. You know, it's lining, doing crosswalks, things like that, so. But again, the limit is what can we get done in the current materials market and, and labor? So we'll see. But we are, at this point, the board is approving the intergovernmental agreement, which is, says all that. So, and basically, this is a, the, the way the Northview project worked was really the village handled most of it, so.
I'll make the motion to approve the item as presented.
I'll second one.
Katie, second it?
John Brotherton?
Aye.
Moto Johnson?
Aye.
Katie Johnston?
Aye.
Diana Mendoza? Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Joe Robinson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
We're on to my favorite topic. All right. So I'm going to share my opinion on this now, because I, I withheld, I guess. And I'll make a recommendation. So overall, I think, I'm not sure if you've all looked at all of the changes that we made to the dress code, but I think it's a substantial improvement in our dress code, particularly related to gender, which is something that is, has been coming up a lot in schools. They, dress codes have historically targeted girls' clothing, and so we're trying to put some things in there that makes it more objective. We're trying to take the teacher out of that awkward position of having to talk to kids about their clothing. And so there's, there's a lot of very positive things, I think, that are in that dress code chain. So where we've gotten stuck is on the hats. So my recommendation at this time is that we approve dress code option one. And option one is the no head coverings, except for the things that would already be allowed, religious observance, if a kid needed something for a medical reason. The other piece, I think, that in talking with board members that, I think is we, we do want to look long-term at what does this mean, particularly at the junior high. And so I am going to be, if you approve this, I'll have the administration at AIDR work with a student committee. Because I guess my conversation with the board, a board member was, do kids really want hoods and hats? We haven't asked that, and we haven't gotten into that. We haven't surveyed parents either, but it's partly asking the kids, is this really what you would want? Why would you want this? And they may have a different answer for us. So that would be something we'd bring back the next time around when we try to approve the dress code. Okay? So that is my recommendation. For what it's worth, I don't get a vote. Questions? Comments?
See, now, would you like to make, make the motion?
I make the motion to approve the family student handbook as presented with option one for the dress code.
Thank you. Second?
I second.
Diana?
Wasn't true.
They had rocked their business on there.
All right. John Brotherton?
Aye.
Moto Johnson?
Aye.
Katie Johnston?
Aye.
Diana Mendoza?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Joe Robinson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
All right, thank you. This is officially the shortest meeting that Diana and Katie will ever have. All right. So FOIA, I should correct this, we did have a FOIA yesterday, and I was able to complete it. And it was, then they FOIA'd me again immediately. So that's what I get for turning it around quickly. But it's about the construction project out here, just getting some background information. I've included in your packet a commercial insurance summary that I got from WuShu, which is our HR consultant. And I found it fascinating, because I had seen all of the various types of insurance that we have to carry to operate the school district, all in one place. That's, it was everything but medical, essentially. Media, we had an article, we were, there was some information from us, about us in the News Gazette. There was a great picture of LeBette and Sammy from Pleasant Acres. And there's linked in your packet, a article published by Illinois State University that talks about the touring program that we have going on. Pre-K facility grant, I said, this is Lori's dream. It's, I would say it's Jenny's dream, too. So we are going to be applying for this grant, and Jenny, you get 30 seconds.
Okay, so the state has put out, for the first time in several years, a construction grant for early childhood. It is $100 million. The first year, $60 million, and the second year, $40 million, which sounds amazing and fantastic, except when you think about the fact that the one that we would be looking at and talking with the architect, because we've been looking at something like this for a while, would be upward to $14 million. So it doesn't take much math- So it doesn't take much math to figure out 60 million in one school and even 14 million, that's the max that you can ask for. It's very competitive, right? It's going to be tough for us to get it, but we're going to try. So it's, the application is due in October. We would find out this fall if we got it. We have five years to use the money. So we have the architect working on really state-of-the-art pre-K facilities that are very focused on what play-based learning would look like. So we'll share some of the drawings as they come up with those. We have initial ones that we, I think we've shared before with the board, but he's updating it. And so we're just going to go for it and keep our fingers crossed that even if we aren't selecting the first one, that maybe we can get it in the second round.
There's some, there is some costs just associated with coming up with a plans in order to go into the grant. So the dream is we have a state-of-the-art pre-k facility. And we would also be looking at, within that, most likely offering some full-day pre-k. We'd probably go with that, which there is a need for that, for sure. All right, but that'd be awesome if we get it. And where would it be? Everybody's going to speculate.
One important piece-
The board decides all that stuff if we get the grant.
Right. One important piece is it is a matching grant. But the good news is that the match is, is based on a school district tier system. And we are a tier-one district. So the maximum a school district would have to match is 10%. So that's $1.4 million if we got a full 14. I would guess we'd be more around 3% to 5% because we are a tier-one school district. So, I mean, that would be pretty minimal. And we have the land if we were to put it on maple wood, so.
And one of the discussions-
Would be that.
Is maybe it was that, it could also be if, if we attach it, I'll say it, to an existing school, then we are able to access those 1% sales tax funds. If it's a separate, brand-new building, we cannot access the 1% sales tax funds. But there's a lot that has to fall into place before we get this discussed.
Unless we add it on to it, we build it and then we can add on to it using the 1%.
You can tell what Jenny and I do in our conversation. There's no public comment because we didn't have any. All right, board superintendent comments? I'll go first, I have it written down. Thank you to our board members who were able to attend our opening day kickoff on Monday. We saw a lot of you there. I know not everybody can come, because a lot of you are busy with work. And then, as I said, Nikki and, who did I see? Katie, Katie, Diana, John, and we're at the opening kickoff ceremony. And then Nikki and Katie came and ended the Sydney Dairy Barn truck, which was fun. And I may have eaten too much ice cream on that. It was paid for by Law &amp; Right. But we are off to a good start so far. As you've seen, I think the, probably the number one thing I'm getting questions on as superintendent is about arrival and dismissal, and, which is normal. I remember this happening last year. Last year, it was Northview because they had the new layout from the Safe Routes to School project. So this year, it's East Lawn because they're trying to change their traffic pattern to make it safer. So we'll see then. So the things I need to make sure I inform you of is the district is updating-
Sorry. Sorry.
The district is updating its 403B retirement plan document to include 403B Roth. That's, it's not a new contract, we are just updating it. I asked if it had to be board-approved and I was told no, but you should tell your board. That's what I was told by the auditor. The district is considering adding, this is an additional administrative position to oversee human resources and assume some responsibilities with grants. I will be bringing this, a proposal to the board next week for consideration. And I'm sure you may have some questions of me for that. Still pending, I had hoped to have it done for this meeting, but frankly, we're spending a lot of time on the budget, is we have to get the administrative cost waiver hearing taken care of soon. So I'm hoping we'll have that done next time. Also, this is more for the public, as I have been informing the board, we have three construction projects going on. East Lawn, Pleasant Acres, and JWA are not complete and should be finalized within the next month. I think it'll be much sooner than that. And it has, it has not affected us opening schools or accessing the buildings at all. So at East Lawn, they were able to do the brickwork on the south side. They finished that yesterday and they were, got through most of it on the north side today. So it's not taking them long. And then it's the finishing touches. So I think they are still waiting on some of the stonework to be received. ADR is going to get the parking lot paved. I just saw that email, is it next weekend?
The 26th.
Is that next weekend? Next Friday?
The 27th.
The 27th is the football game. So yes, it's Friday, the 26th. And we'll get the, the parking lot paved. So like I said, a month is very generous, it should be just within a couple of weeks. That's all I have. Board?
I have one comment, you actually sent an email out on it about, you know, us being patient and stuff, about the kids going in and out of the buildings. Well, I dropped my niece and my son off the last couple of days at Northview. I still, to me, I really haven't seen a great improvement on that, in and out, because it's still a huge, huge problem. I mean, I got in and out with no problem, but this morning, I'm sitting there and there were some vehicles that did not really, they were right in front of the school. And you know how wide that is, it's not very wide. And there was, the fourth car back had its door open on the, on the area where a car could or cannot or should, in my opinion, should not pass. And they were getting their child out on that side instead of the school side. We had two vehicles that drove on part of the road and on the grass to go around this person. And I was just wondering, that's not a good thing.
Well, no, is that a trick question?
I was, I was just, I was just thinking.
So I actually was having a conversation today with Ranool Police Department and I think you will likely start to see more police presence at arrival and drop-off.
I have seen that.
It's partly to address that.
They have done that, I've seen a great.
Yeah, so they're gonna, I mean, it's, they're not going to be able to be everywhere they need to be.
This is actually right there on the, I believe, that's what shocked me. And it's no discredit to the school or what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure the teachers and the faculty is trying to do the best they can to get the, the kids in and out of the school. I just, I was just thinking, man, that's not, that's not a good thing.
Thank you.
I mean, is there any way we can just put a barricade?
Probably.
Across that part so no one can go in and?
Yeah, we'd have to, I'll, I'll talk with Kelly, Ms. Mahoney.
I'm just saying that would be, in my opinion, the easiest way because, you know, I just, I mean, I get impatient myself. I'm sure that some of these parents might not be late for work or whatever, but they definitely did want to wait. And it just shocked me when the person drove on the grass. And now that's at, right in front of the school. And before I forget, coming in that back way that you come in, there was a vehicle that drove on the grass, completely on the grass in there through the parking lot. And that kind of was, I didn't know somebody that worked at the school or what, but it was late for work.
I will follow up with them in what support she wants.
I mean, I'm just saying, I want to know.
Thank you.
If at all possible.
Yes, sir.
Kind of jumping off what Moto was just saying. Thank you to the teachers and staff who are working really hard to make that run really smoothly. You know, they were definitely like running around, trying to make things work, trying to get kids to us all like as quickly and as safely as possible. And I appreciate it, especially like, like you said, I think East Lawn had a bit of a day yesterday. So thank you to the people who are working really, really hard.
It took a long time today too, so, but they're, seemed to be moving smoother. That's why I wasn't in Northview, I meant how we're in East Lawn.
Oh, no, yeah, I mean, your, your email actually read right. You know, you, you said you're trying, we're doing the best we can. And I believe that they are. I just, I think they're, the, the person that followed was the two people that, three people that actually took it upon themselves to drive on the grass like that. It just kind of shocked me seeing it.
I think you also brought the point about maybe dropping it off a little bit further away from the building, make a block away and let the kids walk, you know, in east weather. That, I think that not only suggested, but you gave them.
I even gave street grants.
Yes.
That's why I couldn't remember Harper today, because I just looked at it this morning.
There's. I have a couple. I'd like to thank all the faculty and staff for putting in a great deal of time and effort to get the school you're going. Can't thank them enough. It's amazing who we have here and appreciative leadership that we have here. And the second thing is, there's an email sent out today, one of your emails, deal with work next month, next board meeting, on the 15th, we're going to honor hopefully Ms. Ramich.
She's coming.
She moved last day, September 20th, by the way. And then two sick days and things like that, she, she's able to retire at that time. And so we're going to do it on the 15th, we're going to honor her. And can you talk about the, what you guys came up with, I, I would think that's a good thing.
For Michelle?
Yeah.
Okay, that was the big surprise next month. But she knows about it.
Yeah, she does.
So we are working to start a Ranool City Schools Foundation so that we have an independent source of funds to support our schools and our teachers. So for Michelle, it was kind of a, you know, what do you get Mrs. Ramich for a gift? She's been downsizing as long as I know her and doesn't want anything. So the administrators started the, collecting the funds just among us to give the first donation to jumpstart this Ranool City Schools Foundation. We're not properly established yet. I've got a meeting next week and it would be something independent of the school district that would have an independent board, not elected, it's not anything like this, that would be determining how to allocate those funds. So for me, you know, when I'm looking to donate to a charity, when my wife and I are, you know, there isn't a charitable location to put funds to support the school district. People give us money, but it literally goes into the general fund and can go anywhere. We could use it to pay for anything. So this would be a separate thing. And at this point, we're sitting at about $2,500 to start it. And, and we haven't really done any fundraising for it yet. So I, I told the, the people I'm meeting with next week that I think our short-term goal is $10,000. And what a foundation would do is, the way it's intended is, you have a certain amount of principal established and then the revenue that you get off of the principal is what you are giving back into the school district each year. So Champaign and Urbana school districts have a very large foundation, the CU Schools Foundation. And they do a lot of funding. If we were ever like that, that'd be amazing. I don't expect us to be, we're a much, much smaller district and community. But they're able to do a lot of really nice things for the, the teachers and for the schools with those additional funds. I think it's a good way to honor Michelle. And long-term, I think it's something that our school district can benefit from.
Not quite done yet.
Okay, the other piece is-
Yes, something else.
We are in- Mr. Brotherton brought this up with me, is that we had several very long-term board members who left the board in 2020 and 2021. Typically, the board has recognized board members when they leave the board. We did get a, I, I said, when it all happened, that was April of 2021, we were going to get a perpetual plaque and it's going to be, well, the perpetual plaque will be ready next month, I promise. It's been a year and a half. It is sitting in, it's in my office right now. And, but we are inviting the, the board members who were not recognized, inviting them in to also come in. And they were here most of the time, Michelle was the superintendent. And instead of, they have the choice to get the gift that we've typically given to a board member, which Hannah refers to as the tombstone.
No, the mantle clock.
The mantle clock? I thought it was a rock.
Well, we, we used to do that, but we don't do that, we've moved to mantle.
It's a mantle clock now. Or, or a donation to the Ranool City Schools Foundation on their behalf. We'll have, I expect we'll have several former board members here next month also. Nothing major, it'll be quick and give Michelle a chance to be thanked and maybe she'll give a speech, right? I don't think she'll, I don't think she will. Is that it?
Thank you, man.
Good. Almost seven.
Anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I actually knew that from where I was coming from, I was looking at him too. Would you like to second?
I'd second.
All in favor, let's make a voice for it.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Give me a moment to stop the camera. Hey, how are you?
Yeah, how are you?